At this time, we will call our American Rescue Plan Act workshop to order. And the first item is the approval of the agenda. So I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. We're down to items for discussion, the American Recovery Plan Act funds discussion. As you well know, we've had three monthly meetings where we've asked the public to comment on how to spend the funds. And we've had three separate public meetings. One at Blunt's Creek, one in Aurora, I mean, I'm sorry, one at Old Ford, and one at Pintown, the fire department. So we've had a total of six public comment or public input. So tonight, we've got a list of all the items that's been discussed. Either you don't have it in front of you, but I made a list here. We've heard broadband on the south side. We've heard solid waste and recycling. We've heard the jail, the library, the water system, and stormwater drainage, the volunteer fire departments, nonprofits, as it relates to fundraising because of cancellation due to the COVID. And what have I missed? But these are items that we...
The water line expansion.
Yeah. Water system expansion. So what is the wishes of the commissioner? Do we want to have a straw vote on these individual projects to see if they move forward to the next level? Do we come up with some kind of criteria for the selection? But this is our workshop, so the floor is open.
Mr. Chairman, the ones that you read off, do all of them qualify for this money?
Not according to where we're at today on the interpretation.
Which one is already eliminated, you know?
Brian, you want to take a stab at that? I mean, based on what I've read and the conference calls I've been on, the library would not qualify. The solid waste and recycling would not qualify. And I think, is that it?
There was a comment about register deeds office, and that would not qualify. The only way you could qualify for any of the things that were outside of what specifically is written is based on revenue loss. And our objection is we didn't have any revenue loss.
The other question I have is, if these projects, we spend money, and from what I have been reading and listening at my conferences, we're going to be audited very, 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 very strictly. And if we allocate some funds, and they're not spent like they're supposed to be spent, and we have to pay it back, is that correct?
You would be required to pay back any funds that you've spent incorrectly. Every municipality, every state, and every county in the United States is getting money. So how much auditing they're going to do, I don't know. But if you were a lucky one to be drawn for an audit, you just need to make sure you can justify and cover yourself.
Yes.
Well, I think one thing that all of us can agree on, we all want broadband. And I think if we will go ahead and fix up exactly what we're going to do with broadband, and then what funds we have left over, then let's deal with the other items that we're going to deal with.
Well, two things along what you're talking about. I understand that the final rules haven't been put forth yet. Is that right? They're still working on the final?
The interim final rule is still out there, and they're receiving comments on it, but it hasn't been finalized. It's a timing thing. And then there are additional bills in the North Carolina General Assembly we're waiting to hear about.
Didn't we make inquiry to the powers that be on some of these projects to see whether they would fly or not?
I did make an inquiry through NACO on solid waste and recycling, and I got a note back from them, said, "We'll look at it." Haven't heard anything back from them. I raised that question on just about every seminar that I've been on, and been told at each of those seminars that it would not be eligible. The only way it would be eligible is if it were a revenue, general government under revenue loss, which unfortunately, we don't have any revenue loss. Or fortunately, we don't have any revenue loss.
Fortunately, yeah. There are some consulting firms out there that are working on this.
We had a conversation with, in fact, we've engaged recently, a very reputable solid waste firm to help us looking at some solid waste stuff. And we asked them that specific question, and they said, "No, that you couldn't." They would certainly love to be able to do that, but they didn't. They were not saying you could either.
No, I meant some consulting firms on the Recovery Act.
I think there are lots of firms. There's a tremendous amount of folks out there who will love to be a consultant for you, to help you spend your money. Yes, sir. Just a second note on that. There were funds, I don't know if y'all saw that, from the association. There were funds that were allocated by the state of North Carolina to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. I think they allocated some to the league municipalities as well, to assist counties and to assist cities in their efforts. Kevin Linder sent a note last week that said, "Tell us how you need help on that, and how fast you need help on that." But they did get money allocated to them to assist counties with making sure they were doing what they were supposed to with it.
Well, you know, solid waste covers a pretty broad area of things. This wouldn't apply to the infrastructure part of solid waste?
Not to my understanding, no, sir. I specifically asked the question, would it apply to solid waste and recycling? And the answer I got was, no, only under the general revenue loss portion, because it would be considered a general government operation.
But you can build out water systems, and you can build out the internet.
You can. Because those were specifically called out, water sewer, stormwater, and broadband, those were specifically called out in the legislation.
Well, what has happened to us here is that some people in powerful positions decided what they want built, and we can either do it or not take the money. Basically, I mean, that's a cramdown is what it is.
Cramdown. Part of this cramdown.
You know, I've got a problem with spending money on things that we don't need just to be spending money. It's immoral. It's unethical.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Randy.
I think in our travels, we have learned some shortcomings and some spinoffs that have, people have mentioned. And one of them was the lack of being able to get information from the county. And I know broadband would solve some of that problem, but really, how do you get information out there, especially to the folks who don't have internet? And the only way I can think of is like the information sign, like it's at the community college, that if we were to put them kind of around the county, and we could have signage that say, "There's a meeting, there's a this, there's a danger, there's a weather, you know, situation," kind of like we do with the phone. But would that be encompassed with this money? Would that, would you pay for those sort of things? You've got to look at information without the internet, and how you reach people that don't have the internet.
So your question, would a digital sign on the south side of the river, similar to the one that the college qualified?
DOT does this with their highway signs, and if there's an amber alert or whatever. I mean, think of all the people that ride by heading to Aurora every day. You could really get some information. I mean, churches do it now. So...
How would you explain changing the hours on the convenience sites in days that they're closed? And I mean, the sign doesn't, it's small in terms of how much information you put on it.
Right. Well, you just have to be clever in how you do it. But I mean, when we brought up, and when the Blunt's Creek folks said, you know, how do we find out about these things? And we said, "The internet," and they all started laughing, because that's what they don't have. So, I mean, the internet would help, but it wouldn't help my mother. She doesn't even, you know, she has a flip phone and no computer.
You should drive.
Yeah.
Drive down to the south side.
That's right, if you went that way.
On broadband, I asked Brian if he would reach out to River Street to see where they were at. If we were to set aside 4 million for broadband, and then we got the match from the state of 4 million, the vendor has to put up matching funds of 4 million. And Brian, would you want to share what the response was?
I mean, our conversation was, was that a possibility? He said, "It's a possibility." He'd have to obviously have that conversation with his boss, but that they would do as best they could. I mean, we've not had any detailed conversations with them, because we've not been direct by the board to do that since you signed an MOU with them. So we've kind of been on hold, waiting to have those conversations, to have those detailed conversations. But I don't want to speak for Greg, but that conversation was something that was, he said they would certainly look at that.
Well, the reason that I asked Brian to do that was, until Keith said that the vendor had to match what the state was putting in, as well as the county, up to the 4 million, you know, I was not aware of that. So I mean, that's a total of 12 million if we were able to pull that off, if the final bill in Raleigh gets approved.
If the final bill gets approved, and that's the language that still stays in the final bill, we just don't know yet.
Right.
In the same token, it would not harm us any to set aside the 4 million for to show that we have a sincere commitment to having broadband all across this county. I think that is a wonderful thing to do, and that still leaves money to fund other projects.
What would be the most aggressive thing we could do concerning broadband? And then what's the least aggressive thing? I mean, would the 4 million be considered an aggressive move by us? I mean, you want to put it out there so people say, "These folks are serious." And I mean, what would that look like? What's, I guess, what's the next move if we agree that broadband's the way to go?
Well, I think based on what Brian is saying, is that if we want River Street to start moving, we've got to take some action. And as far as the dollar amount, the only reason I said 4 million is the fact that that's the maximum amount that, on the current language in the bill, would be. So I mean, to get back and answer your question, you know, when you look at the total amount, it was in 30-some million. But to address the worst area in the county, I think the commitment from the county or from outside was 7 million, 7 point something.
So Commissioner Walker, if you really, if you wanted to say, what's your most aggressive stance, I guess? If you took the initial 7 whatever, put in the backbone, and then took an additional one or two, and matched that against the state, against the vendor, then you got 6 that you continue to build out, put up vertical assets to try to cover the rest of it. I mean, that was the plan initially, was to put in infrastructure to where you could use the county's vertical assets to put in fixed wireless. And then, as additional grants became available, build out those areas that you had fixed wireless in with fiber to the home, to get it stood up and get it stood up quickly. Because under the original great grant program, you had three years to get it in, which is extremely aggressive in that business. So you had, you essentially had to use fixed wireless. You had to go and look at vertical assets and hit that. And that's essentially what the original plan was, based on hard-off funding and what the board had originally set aside, because you still, you already have a half million dollars that you've set aside for that project that you were going to look to try to match with. So I mean, the second piece of that is, there's going to be, whether it is a federal, there's going to be a federal infrastructure package that comes out. Don't know exactly when it's going to come out. It's obviously going to, whether it comes through reconciliation, like the first piece came through, or whether it comes through with a bipartisan support, that they've got a couple, they've got a group of senators that are working on that. You just don't know where that's going to come. But my anticipation is there's going to be another big infrastructure piece that comes out from the federal government, that will have a lot of broadband money in it as well. So if you really want to be aggressive, you say, "We put this in place, and we're waiting for that additional money to keep building stuff on out." And you just work your plan. I mean, that's why you, that's why you put a plan together, you start working your plan, and you start eating that elephant one bite at a time. That's your most aggressive stance.
So there you go. There's your parameters there, the most aggressive, and maybe the lesser aggressive is the 4 million. So, you know, we move from there, it sounds like, if broadband's the way to go.
John?
I'd like to vote on it. On the use of 4 million of this funds for broadband.
See, where are the other places that we could spend this money at before we start knuckling down with broadband? Where else can you spend money?
I think broadband provides the best return for the buck for the taxpayers of Beaufort County.
I think it's a zero.
And that, well, you can't use it with your phone.
I can.
Anyway, that's a motion on the floor.
What do you...
That we vote to set aside 4 million of the American Rescue Act funds to begin the negotiation on broadband with River Street.
Do we need to add verbiage to it to go ahead and allow the county manager and our attorney to move forward with trying to work that?
With the memorandum of understanding. Yes, sir.
I don't have a problem with what you're trying to do. But the last time, if memory serves me well, the last time that we talked, that project was about 7 million. And I don't know whether 4 million would start it moving, but it would be, it would go a long ways with, if the other monies come in. You see what I'm saying?
There are two other sources of funds, as I understand it. One is what could come out of the state right now, that's, you've got a bill that's been passed by the House, it's in the Senate. The other is what's coming still yet from the federal government, that has not even been passed yet. I guess, now, you know, we don't even have the other half of this money. It won't have till when? May? Okay, so it's another nine months away. Okay.
I just don't think we know enough about alternatives to start voting on anything. I don't think we, I think we need to discuss all of the alternatives, and then come back and put votes on it. You're jumping off cliff.
I've got a motion on the floor.
I'd like to speak.
Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
All right.
Stan?
Yeah, well, this much it's state, with this much money being forced towards communities, I think we need to take time to make the best decision we can. We don't know 100% that we cannot use some of this money for solid waste. We don't know, in my opinion, that would be the greater priority. I think we need to know what the priorities are in some kind of definable order that we can all agree to, and then we decide what to do with the money. I'm not against broadband, but I am more in favor of what will affect more households in Beaufort County than is solid waste.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right. All those in favor of moving forward with a commitment of 4 million, raise your right hand. And those opposed? Do we need to come back with another motion to...
Well, also, my motion that we allow the county manager to move forward with the memorandum of understanding and discussions with River Street.
We have a memorandum of understanding that the board's approved, so that is in play. You're saying move forward negotiations on how we would move forward based on that MOU?
That's what I'm recommending.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, there's clauses in there allowing us either party to pull out at any time, so, and not spend any money. But we need to get in line.
Is that in the original motion, or do we need a separate one?
I think you need a separate one. You've already taken that first motion. You've already taken that first vote.
You want to...
Okay. I motion that we allow the county manager to move forward with executing memorandum of understanding from back in November.
I'm sorry, not trying to mess you up, but the memorandum of understanding was executed, approved by the board. It's in place. I think what you're saying is now move forward negotiations.
Yes. Negotiations is outlined in the memorandum of understanding.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. All right. Where do you want to go next? As it relates to giving some guidance to staff on any of these other projects that are eligible, that we feel like is on the list to move forward?
Is extending the water line, which we had a request for, is that in play here?
It is definitely something that's in play. It was discussed. Any of those infrastructure pieces are in play. They just have to meet either the clean water management guidelines, or the clean, there's another one. There's two federal programs. They just use those guidelines as the easy way to say if they're eligible for this. But yes, an extension would be eligible. Now, the question that comes off of that, that the water committee discussed this morning, was the county's general policy relating to water line extensions is such that the developer or the group of ratepayers typically bear that cost, and then they are connected onto the system. Like, if we had a new development, they went in. Typically, what happens is the developer puts all the infrastructure in the ground, they get it certified by the state, get it approved by the state, and then they turn it over to the county. The county then owns it, manages it, runs it, keeps it up forever. So that is different than what you would normally do. So that was a discussion that the water committee had this morning.
Well, I wouldn't think that we would be putting water in a developer subdivision. That wouldn't be right and not fair to the rest of the people. I think we're talking about building out a distribution system so that other people can put water into their subdivision, or into their home, or whatever. Do you know right offhand what the main line, where is it at on 33? The county's main line. Do you have any idea where that's?
I couldn't speak specifically to exactly where that line is. I'd have to have the conversation with Christine or Eric for them to...
Does Aurora have their, do they have a separate water system?
They do.
They do?
So, I mean, I think it's obviously eligible. You can obviously extend lines. And if you wanted to look at, I mean, it's not, it's not anything different than if you got grant money to do it, if you worked through, like we've done in the past, to extend lines to areas that were eligible under CDBG. Where we've done work to get money from CDBG to extend a line based on eligibility in households. There are a lot of places in Beaufort County that we have seen that when we try to do that, they get kicked out, simply because you cannot qualify for a CDBG grant for somebody who has a second home. It just doesn't, they won't do it. So if you viewed this money as essentially grant money, like you do in some of those, you obviously could. I mean, it's clear on the statute, or it's clear on the legislation that you can extend water lines and extend infrastructure. It's just, you've got to decide where that's most needed, most important.
Well, where do we have in Beaufort County that we need to put in distribution lines? We had a request from two of the developments east of Aurora, Windsong 3, 2 and 3. These things are very difficult to get to, and a long way from a lot of things.
Well, I don't know as we know that. We know that the line stops before it gets to them. It's in, we also know it's in Windsong 1. We are servicing Windsong 1.
County water?
County water.
No. 30, 40, 30, 30. Oh, it is. Okay.
We also had a request from another development that is between Aurora and Southside for extending a line there. The line goes down, and then there's another road that goes parallel to the river that was not put in. And it's, I think, 8 tenths of a mile or something like that. 20-some customer.
I'd rather spend the money on water infrastructure than internet.
But what would we do? I mean, would we move, take the water to the edge of the subdivision and let the association, who's ever in charge, take it further and take it down their own streets? So there wouldn't be appearance of a conflict?
I don't know where it's at right now. I mean, we know it's at Windsong 1, and 8 tenths of a mile to Windsong 2 and 3?
8 miles to Windsong 3.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with extending the line on the highway, but we have to be cognitive
of the people who paid for extensions. And now, all of a sudden, we're going to just give one away. And so I don't, I don't want us to get into that position.
Jerry's right. We have a long history of not paying for developers to have water in their subdivision. It costs a lot of money to put it down. They can put it down themselves if they want to, if the engineer certifies it. I'm out of right-hood. So, and we've seen a lot of people pay a lot of money and put a lot of trouble into getting that water, and that's a great thing. But if all of a sudden, we've got money, and we're going to start giving good buddy a special privilege, we've got a problem. Because there's a history of us not doing that. So Jerry's right. I agree with him 100%.
How about if we asked the water committee or staff to take a look at all of Beaufort County as it relates to water, and see if it makes sense for us to extend it? You know, there'd be 10 places in the county that all it would take us another half a mile or a mile. I'm not talking about inside the subdivisions or the developments, but to extend the main water lines. Well, and not to take issue with Jerry and Stan, but if you go back to the original systems that were built, we did run them through subdivisions. We didn't hook people up. Of course, anybody has to pay for his own hookup.
Of course, anybody has to pay for his own hookup itself, so I don't know that if you started doing these things, that you wouldn't be doing the same policy that we had when we built out the system to begin with. But, you know, if you had a new developer out there doing a subdivision, no, we've never paid for that. Developers pay for their own in these new developments. I mean, you take something like Crystal Beach, the water lines in Crystal Beach, I mean, that's an old subdivision, it's been there for a while. These other subdivisions we're talking about have probably been there for a while, and I don't mind myself running the lines in front of the houses. I just don't want to be developing in new developments. You know, you've got an existing house. And we need a better policy than we had before on, excuse me, on taps and what taps cost. Would be the same thing that we charge for a tap now. I would presume, we run the line in front of a house, we get the same charge that we get for a tap now.
So, I would go with Frankie's suggestion that we take a look at the county in total and see that, because I don't, I mean, we're just talking about the ones we've heard from because they've volunteered, but.
Well, and typically, I mean, that's how we receive our requests. I don't know that we are, I don't know that our staff, our water department staff is saying, "We need to run a line there." We typically receive a request either from a person, subdivision, homeowner says, "We'd like water," and then our folks look at it. I think from this instance, you've had a couple that have said, "We like it." The challenge I think you would have, as Commissioner Richardson was saying, was if you just ran it past and then depended on the subdivision or the homeowners' association to do all the rest, and they've got to hire an engineer, they've got to get certified by the state, because we're obviously not going to take it unless it's built state certifications, built our certifications. So it would make sense, I guess, if you did that, for us to do it exactly the way we did before and just run it throughout the place. Now, we would not go in areas where they're not. That wouldn't make sense, because then you're just adding a benefit to somebody to potentially develop that area.
Well, that's no different policy than when we started out, and that was a subsidized system even then. Now, you've got some other issues with the water system. There are some places that too small of the lines were put in, simply because we put them in to get services to people. Since then, population has increased in those areas, so there may be some places that we need to resize the lines. And there are several places in Beaufort County that borings were done under creeks, and you know, our creeks are substantial, and the lines are blocked off on both sides because the bore failed somehow, the structure failed, the water line failed, so rather than repairing the water line, what the water department has done is block the lines on both ends. So we've got some of that stuff that's infrastructure that we can go back, we can fix a lot of stuff that needs fixing.
I would agree with Commissioner Richardson. There are some opportunities either to upsize some lines or to create some loops where we don't have.
Yeah, loops.
And, you know, we run into that battle. As y'all well know, the system, when it was put in, was put in, just like Commissioner Richardson said, how much grant money can you get? That's why you had seven districts, and that's why some places you have four-inch lines and two-inch lines and those kind of things. So there is an opportunity for staff to look at that from their engineering studies to say, "This four-inch needs to be a six or an eight." I mean, you could probably do those kind of things. And if that brought into some instances, some extensions to be able to add to the system, that might be appropriate as well. You can use American Rescue Act funding to pay a consultant to look at those things. You could hire an engineering firm to look at those things if you needed to. That is in their language. You could do planning studies and things like that to determine, is it appropriate, is that an appropriate, not an appropriate expenditure, but is it the right thing to do for the system? You could do that.
Brian, were you involved with the Flowers development when we were looking at trying to expand and?
I was involved in some of that in listening to the proposal that came about. For that instance, that would, just in my opinion, that would have benefited one property or one commercial operation, which you might want to be careful about.
But if I remember correctly, that was one of those limitations from the water tower to where it would go back on the property, that line was too small?
I think when it all came down to it, it was money thing. It was more of a fire, it was more of a fire suppression issue. What they want to do, as I recall now, I may be wrong, but what I think I remember was that they wanted some residential overnight stuff that required fire suppression sprinkler system. And the pressure wasn't there to do that, the lines weren't there to do that. There was the opportunity to do a draft from the river, didn't want to do that. It just came down to a matter of cost, and they said, "We're not going to move forward."
None of our system in the county is actually fire-rated. None of these farmers' homes, you know, they go out and put a fire there and they give somebody a break on fire insurance. Well, I'm here to tell you, they don't meet fire flow, none of them do. The system was never designed to do it. But a lot of people are doing things that they shouldn't do. I mean, I told Pembroke County, I did a subdivision down there, all they needed was a four-inch line. They insisted on an eight-inch line because of fire. And I said, "When they sue you, because this doesn't work, I will testify against you because what you're doing is wrong."
What do you?
I'm sorry, just one of the other things related to the water system that you're aware of that was presented to you during budget time was that there's a SCADA system that needs to be replaced for the county. And I think the Public Works Director put a number of about $800,000 on that.
What's the wishes of the commissioners?
I mean, you never know. Never know the problem you have till you get someone out there to look at it and give you some guidance. I mean, water is essential, and water is just as essential to me as anything else.
I'll make a motion that we send this to the Public Works Department to take a look at what lines need upsizing, what lines have been blocked off on bores, additional distribution system in all areas of the county. And the SCADA system and anything else that these guys might be willing to pay for.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Stan, were you for or against?
Yeah, he voted for it.
Okay.
A non-vote is affirmative.
Well, since he was here, I just wanted to verify that.
Voting present.
I would, would you be opposed to the staff talking to a consultant to get some feel for?
Well, I think, yeah. I think they can do the inventory. The consultant would be more for the design practicability. I think once we approve it, they go to consultant if they need to.
I think the Public Works Director can probably give you a pretty good idea about which things. We may need some help on numbers, but I think she could probably give you a good idea.
Okay, one of the other items that we heard was, it's related to the volunteer fire departments. Is that something we want to put out there and start moving forward? The association has a meeting next Monday night. And what I'm thinking is that if we had some kind of understanding, we might be able to put that out there and say that's something we're considering.
I think that it is an eligible expenditure under the funds. The federal government treasury has put out some guidance on how you calculate that revenue loss. I was going through some of the FAQs this afternoon, there was a new one that just came out today, and it talks about specifically when you can look at those and what it's for, and it talks about nonprofits, which our fire departments are nonprofits. And essentially, I guess what you would do is you would look at the specific timeframe and have them go back the year prior, the way the legislation is written. If we were doing it for the county, we would have to look at our prior year revenues and then look at the pandemic-related revenues and what was the difference. And then that is the eligible amount. So there were obviously some fundraising opportunities for fire departments that did not occur due to the pandemic. My understanding is there were some alternative things that were done that actually turned out pretty good for some of them, too. But that would have to be a question you'd have to ask them. And I guess the good news about that is it's on the books already, so you would be able to see. I think you could have some pretty clear numbers on who did okay and who didn't do okay.
Brian, is that something that, we've got the information that our staff can put that number together, or is it something we've got to ask each one of the volunteers, the departments, to submit?
I think we would need to get that from them. We would need to give them the parameters. We do have some of that information each year that we get from them based on their budget, but what we would want to do is go back and look at their actual numbers. And that's certainly doable. They have those.
Is that something that we can agree on, that maybe on Monday night, that Brian could do a presentation and ask them to, that we're considering that and to maybe submit the number so we can get a feel for it?
I have a question for Brian.
Okay.
Brian, is that just lost revenue that you're looking at? I mean, you know, I just, for example, Pine Town didn't have their annual barbecue. But, I mean, but then again, you're looking at this timeframe that they had the second one, you know, they had two a year. Are we just talking about lost revenue from a certain point? Or how do you look at it?
It is, as the finance officer was saying, it's based on total revenue, so you can't just say, "What was my fundraising revenue?" It would be the entire revenue that came in, so if, I think it allows some exclusion of grants, doesn't it? I think. But you have to look at the entire package. There's a definition that treasury has put out, time period to time period, in which you would look and compare it to. And the question then arises, not only do you have volunteer fire departments who are dependent upon fundraisers, you have EMS agencies that are the same. I don't know if you want to include them as well. They're both going to be at that meeting, and if you stand up and say, "The fire department", I'm going to get run out by the EMS crowd.
Well, I think as long as we're all in agreement that we're trying to seek the information, because right now, we don't have any idea what that number is. I mean, we could pull a number out of the hat, but does anybody object to us just trying to get the information from fire and EMS?
I think you've got to have it. You've got to make a decision to get it.
Okay.
And I don't really think, I might be going out on a limb, but I don't think it's going to be that significant.
Right.
I mean, it's significant for them, but in the big picture, personally, I'm thinking a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I'm thinking less than that.
Yeah. Well, I think it's very, very appropriate.
What if they can get the money out of this?
I mean, here again, we're talking about making sure that it's eligible, and so far, we've talked about three things that we know is eligible under the, at this point.
And the language is essentially, the intent of it is to make someone, is to make an entity whole for the loss, not more, but just to make them whole for the loss, so.
Okay, where do we go from here?
What else you got on your list that you think is eligible?
I mean, I think we've hit the ones that we know are eligible and kind of rose to the top.
So let's just work on what we got and put some more on it.
Work on what we got. If there's something else come up, we'll look at that also. I mean, you got some numbers, you don't know what this water going to cost you.
Right.
And we're not getting the other half until next May anyway.
Okay.
I know that there was some conversation earlier, Commissioner Richardson had some conversation about jail. We had that conversation with the board that there were some very strict parameters on what you could do with that. There are some opportunities, if you wanted to do some medically related things jail-wise, you could probably do those. Like, if you wanted to do some isolation areas, maybe some negative pressure things, you probably could do that as well. The other piece that we had some discussion about in the budget that the board took out was a facility for us to, for the county to provide for storage of emergency supplies and as a distribution facility. We had originally talked about that being somewhere down toward the city's water treatment plant where we have some infrastructure, and I think Commissioner Richardson said you probably ought to bring it closer to Washington, maybe on the Old County Home property. That was a piece, I think we put $500,000, I think it ended up being about a million, but Barnhill told me it probably would be. But that was pulled out of the budget. I think that's an eligible expense, if you want to consider that. We could try to refine those numbers a little bit. It would be an opportunity for us to have an area where you could receive emergency supplies when they come down from the state, and then have a place to hold them and distribute them throughout the county in case of emergencies. You did a similar piece to that when you built the building at the Health Department for the drive-through vaccinations. So there's an opportunity for somebody, if the board wants us to explore that.
Entertained a motion, too, Jerry?
Some of it.
Hold on, hold on. I think the manager proposed another thing for us to consider, and that is the storage building.
Now, one of the problems I have with storage building is federal government, some of these other people are getting into distributing food to people. We're becoming more communist and more socialist every time we turn around. I'm opposed to building a facility where we're going to bring food in, store it, and distribute it to other people and all that kind of stuff. If you're talking about building something that would maybe replace the storage that we're paying rent on for the sheriff or other things that we're paying rent on, then I think that we should look at this, and if there's an opportunity to get money out of this thing, I think we should take a hard look at it. So what I would say is that we need to, we need to take a harder look at it and put it in this basket of things, because we're struggling to find places to spend this money.
Yeah, and I would think that, and I understand exactly what you're saying, the only anticipation I would see in bringing food in would be MREs when they distribute them out from the state sometimes.
Yeah.
But that would be probably the only thing.
Well, there is a program that's going on, and I'm very much attuned to it, that's in its infancy, that has to do with distribution of food to people on a continuing basis, and I'm totally opposed to the county putting any money into anything that we would do that. If you're talking about these other things that we're already spending money for, I don't have a problem.
We've lost the staging building that we were using during hurricanes at the industrial park, right? Which was ideal, because you could come in with a tractor-trail truck and unload the supplies and redistribute.
And that has traditionally been our approach. We've kind of begged, borrowed, and we've never stolen, but we've begged and borrowed to use facilities. It was, the Committee 100 allowed us to use that facility. We used the cotton storage facility over in Chalkland. You know, we've had memorandums of understanding with those folks to use it. The challenge we ran into is either crops are going in the ground or coming out of the ground, or seeds in there when hurricanes come through, or when we have a need like that. So for us to be able to have a facility that we could designate as that receiving point and distribution point for supplies that come from the state, from FEMA, for emergencies would be great, and then we could also use multipurpose for other things that could help us offset some additional costs that we're expending.
So that's what you're describing, that we would do on the Old County property? So, that's what you're describing, that we would do on the old county property? Possibly.
Possibly. I mean, I think that's, it's an opportunity, you know, we looked at initially, I mean, my quick design with Barnhill was, on one end, you'd have a truck well, and on the other end, you'd have an EGR entrance, so you could drive a pickup truck in one end, you could bring an 18-wheeler on the other end with a forklift and offload, and then the, you know, the fire departments come in with their pickup trucks or whatever and pull out the other end and distribute. So, that's kind of what we were looking at.
Yeah, the location, I just threw that out, out at where the Health Department is, but I mean, it could go in the industrial park. I mean, it could go, you know, someplace like that. I don't know, put it over there, but it's too isolated. There's no security.
I think that definitely ought to be on the list, but I think right now, we've probably got enough on the table to see where we're going to go. But because it fits in, and it's on our, you know, one of the items we've been discussing for at least a year.
Why don't we just put it on the list and then wait until we get the results of the Water Department and the volunteer? Okay?
All right. Hood, you got anything else before we adjourn?
No, sir.
All right. Second. So, Hood made the motion to adjourn, or? Oh, okay. Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen.